Yes, we meet again, this is the council meeting. And we're proceeding on the college's and the town's management issues. It's the traditional council meetings, the day and night meeting, not tonight. I have to text the office of the past president. And remind everyone in the room that proceedings are being recorded. And will be available on the council's website later in the morning. I don't want apologies, there are none. Declaration of interest, are there any declarations of interest by Alderman or the association? I'm sure your reputation as the public is very high. Now, uh, I can do it as a main authority under the latest section of the Rules Act. And move to item four point one, which is so well, now Craig in the eighth late street. What can I add to that? Alderman Farm on the third side, Alderman clearly is the second one. Like to speak to it, Alderman Farm?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor, it's a sheet.
It's a sheet, Alderman clearly, do you want to say it's a sheet?
Uh, no, other than to say that I read the report and that, um, the approval for this is quite mine.
Any other speakers? That's the motion recommending approval, those who are there. Carry on, you may ask. Item four point two is a member application, the interaction of all the possible city area plans, Alderman Farm. Is that up? Alderman clearly, do you, Alderman Farm, if I speak?
Uh, just that I support the recommendation and that the details and conclusions are to be recorded as the reasons for council decision in respect of this matter.
Thank you, Alderman. Yes, look, thank you, Mr Mayor, before I speak to this, I would like to ask a question through you to, um, Mr Lovell in his capacity as city planner, all the old terminology that he's been given. Um, Mr Lovell, um, in your experience, what do you think about chances of getting this with the TPC? I take that as a rhetorical question, it's a straightforward question.
Are you going to guess tomorrow?
We're just passing on, um, through Mr Mayor, um, I think that the chances, uh, of approval are probably greater than we first expected. When we started talking about this idea as city replacements in the Belgrade Bluff, and the way that they were. And the reason for that is that we've taken a fairly novel approach to the Slough Mayor's way. We've tried to make a, a different approach, uh, that doesn't contravene, um, um, the planning of the volume of twenty one, which we prepared in the morning. So, um, given all of that and so recent decisions by the TPC, we hope for it, um, it's going to be a good chance.
Yes, look, that's great, um, Mr Lovell, this, um, is very similar, although not exactly as the Belgrade Bluff special area plan that we back in the eighties pushed strongly to get through. And we had an element of success in those days inasmuch as there was some developments that we thought should have been part and parcel of the plan. And not necessarily got them ticked in the box, but nevertheless, this, um, is going the next step. And I think that this is very similar to other areas within the Greater Hobart area, and that is Bleed, Hobart, Battery Point. Now, these are other areas which of course have their own significance within Hobart City Council's plans, all the new plans, so. So, this is a step forward, and I hopeful that it does get up because I think it means that not only are we going to have not a special area plan as we used to have, something very similar. And this particular Belgrade Bluff specific area plan, I think, is going to open up all sorts of possibilities. And, uh, here's the words of a, of a colleague of mine the other day, it's a test case, and it's going to be tested in the TPC, and I just hope it gets out.
Is around the premise of certainty. And I actually think, uh, as this has evolved, that this, this will also be about certainty. It'll be about providing more clarity for people wishing to, uh, to make renovations or develop in Belgrade, but perhaps also a greater degree of certainty for those people that are in the area as well. So, uh, I think in that sense philosophically, it does align with the objectives that we're seeing in the planning forums to start.
Alderman clearly.
Now, thank you, Mayor, I attended a meeting at Belgrade with Alderman Farm, I'm not sure, cannot remember if any other Alderman were there. And people were concerned about certain aspects, and I think most of those have been covered, so I'm pretty happy. Uh, and I hope it does get up, I really do hope not only tonight, but TPC as well, because I think it does allay a lot of the, the fears of what we proposed for a lot of people down there. Not everyone was in favour of certain restrictions, I've got to say that, but that's why the public manager forward, he can engage in what people feel.
Thank you, that speaks. I reply, Alderman Farm.
Um, this recommendation tonight actually is only including, um, a number of modifications that came from a resident who obviously read the document, understood it, and put forward their changes, which is unbelievable to me. So, well done to the resident who wrote those. Uh, within the context of the original report that went out for consultation, yes, people were concerned about specific points, they've been addressed. And yes, I too am hopeful that these changes will give our special areas and our communities something to fall back on.
Thank you, motion is that we adopt the, uh, the specific area plan, all those in button. Carry on, you may ask. So, that will be forward to the commission for their session. Moving on to governance, and, um, there are a couple of areas there, item four point one, everyone down, we said, Alderman, you said, that's the discussion required. But it's, motion for those to pay. Carry on, you may ask, and, um, item two is the South East Council's feasibility study.
Yes, your worship of, uh, her rise to move for point A one, the council commissioning independent review of KPMG feasibility study into the establishment of Greater South East Council.
Is that going to be done separately? Uh, look, I'm quite happy to take them separately, so having to take A at this time, second of all, we did this.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, uh, this has been quite a slow process, starting from, um, an initial meeting with, uh, I guess, the Minister of Life and Government back in twenty fifteen, February or January, and here we come on the process. And I think at each step, we have tried to be, um, really rigorous in our due diligence around the whole process. Uh, and this was something that we telegraphed early on in the piece, that we reserved the right to get the studies, um, independently analysed, and I believe it's highly appropriate. There's a lot of merit within the KPMG report, I think a lot of the, uh, socio-economic demographic modelling stuff has been quite robust. Uh, but we do really need more than anything else to test assumptions because, uh, small tweaks and changes or novel approaches, when extrapolated, can cause just drastic, drastic changes. And, you know, we, we did read through the report, and it, you know, it starts on page fourteen telling us that we have the lowest cost per capita, um, and ratable property, yet we have more staff per ratable property. On page nineteen in the report, we saw that maps and boundaries were for illustrative purposes only, because when they were talking about the wards. And yet they did absurdly accurate, uh, on a population basis, uh, it was gross malapportionment according to those circles. So, these are some things that are of concern. On page twenty six, uh, when it talks about, um, you know, average rates, uh, media, they're not talking in the rational residential rating, which would be the median rate, uh, average rate to use. Now, with average rates, you have everything from a, uh, one bedroom studio, or it's a studio unit in Clarence, right through to Eastlands, the airport, and shoreline. That, that is something that I want tested. Um, you know, as we move along, um, page forty five of the report talks that should councils merge under any of the options, it necessarily follows that there will continue to be variation in services in, and service levels. Now, based on what? Uh, I, I cannot think of any merger anywhere that's been written up where, like, communities continue under substantive service discrepancies. I mean, if it turns out that the average rate in Midway Point and Warrington are the same, but service levels are, are significantly different, do we really think that that is something that would be tolerated by residents in a new council? I don't think so, and again, I don't know of any evidence to suggest that that's the case. If we move up to probably one of the more important areas that, um, needs, needs some rigor and analysis to explain things perhaps better to us, uh, is around the, um, the costs of, that are put forward, the hypothetical costs. Two point seven million for redundancies, maybe that's right, maybe that's wrong, I, I, I'm not too sure around that, but, um, we're happy to look at that. The figure that concerns me more, however, is the lump sum to two point six million as the integration costs. Now, that is the cost that they're assuming to do absolutely everything, standardised policies, procedures and contracts, all new stationery, branding, now, you know, take branding. Hobart, we know, you know, one percent of that two point six million was their new logo. Um, but if you take Auckland, half a million dollars was their new slogan. Auckland City Council spent five hundred thousand dollars on consultants to get a new slogan, they've replaced the city of sales with Auckland, a place designed by many. So, that's some costs, but that hasn't even taken into account then new logos, letterheads, colour schemes, colour palettes, uniforms, let alone every single sign for every single park and beach, et cetera, across the municipality. Um, and, and what benchmarks we use for those transitions, and all these things that will help, you know, broaden our understanding. Um, there are other things, I mean, you go to page fifty seven, and they, they talk around things, you know, to do with, you know, cost of borrowing, you know, cost of gearing, cost of capital. Uh, you know, a situation where, you know, the, the, the discount rate that we could give or is assumed is exactly, you know, is, is assumed to be the same as, you know, the interest rate. You know, I've never heard of a situation where someone can borrow a hundred percent and there isn't a change. There is always a change in life because funding costs become higher because the bearer, there is risk associated for the bearer. Um, these are things that, that I want to have looked into amongst others, these are things that I think will help us guide us in the process. Um, for me, it's around those assumptions more than anything on page fifty six, if there's time, it'd be nice to see a little bit done on those previous measures as well.
Thank you, Alderman, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, similar lines to what Alderman Walker said, I want to make sure that this is correct because the fact is, we do not wish our ratepayers to be worse off. There are many things here which I've marked in this that I would like to have assessed, and one of the things I've got on page twenty here, on balance, ratepayers are no worse off under any options. That's great, fantastic, but impacts, but the impact theory, and as I say, on page forty eight, it gave us a report on other states where people were saying, you're going to save millions, but yet when it went down to boiled low, it's only ten percent of what they projected. Which if, if on these figures, if it was only ten percent savings, why would you bother? Why would you actually bother? Uh, employment profiles, because we do have so many more people than these others, I just look at the wage differential because we were, we were told that no...
One of the important ones is what is the cost of getting services up to parity? Um, of course, there's, there's a number of assumptions and questions you can go about, um, considering what you consider to be parity. Uh, you know, is it at the re, do you look at it at the regional level or at the household level, or, um, you know, and you can get into that, that whole debate. But, uh, but, you know, the, the approach of the consultants has sort of been, hear all these sayings that you can make and you can put those into whatever services you like. But, you know, I, I, I think Alderman Walker's right, um, if there's a lower level of services in one part of the municipality than another, um, you know, that's not, not really going to be tolerated by those residents for very long. So, you know, I think, I think those option, those issues are missing from the original study and something that, that ought to be examined. Um, this is something that is informing the most important decision possibly that we'll ever have to make in our, uh, career as, as Alderman. And, uh, you know, it is really important that we get it right, and it's, it's worth putting resources into it to make sure that we have, have the best informed decision we possibly can.
Yes, it is, Alderman Dan.
Yes, um, thanks, Mr Mayor, um, it's interesting listening to my colleagues, uh, as they go through their, and make their comments. It's, um, uh, Alderman Hall makes, made a reference to useful, uh, exercises, so far as the first report that was done with KPMG. And then he went on to say, the review will be a useful exercise as well. So, you've really got a useful exercise being confirmed as being in the first instance, and then a useful exercise in the second. The, the, the other point that I want to make is, is in fact what has been referred to in the UTS CLG report. And that is, um, on page two or four, it says, and I quote, "The KPMG is the final stage report and has had significant input already from the four councils involved throughout two thousand sixteen." And then go on to say, whereas this SGS stage, one risk is initial options report. And the content, uh, this is dot point three, is also different in that it includes estimate and analysis, amalgamation of costs and benefits, potential transition costs, and the impact of the options for each council. Okay, so it's, it's really been identified and confirmed by the, um, UTS CLG people that the final report has covered a lot of these key issues. And if you're going to now proceed to, uh, uh, iron out some of the assumptions, uh, that have been made, then really, I, in my opinion, you're going to waste money. Because it's already been identified that this report has been, um, has gone into the nitty gritty and has identified a lot of these key elements. And therefore, why do you need a second report to review a report? And that, of the very nature, I just don't think is appropriate. It was also, uh, Alderman Piers and a number of the other councillors, including Alderman Cusick, made the comment that, um, they want to determine whether the figures are accurate and so on and so forth, whether the employment figures are appropriate and so on. Look, the actual terms of reference that have been identified in the, um, the focus on what the five aspects of the KPMG that they've been asked to, uh, look at are very, very broad, very broad indeed. And what do you expect for thirty thousand? You know, both of these quotes have come in within thirty to thirty-five thousand, and even those particular, um, submissions have said, look, we can only do so much for thirty thousand. Otherwise, you've got to pay for us to come over and, uh, and, uh, travel costs, uh, time spent in hotels, if you want to get other information. So, look, really, if I was offered a consultancy of thirty thousand to overview a report which has been really substantially well done, then I would want a lot more than that. And they could only just gloss over it for that sort of money. And it's also been identified as a number of hours that they would have to spend in order to meet that costing of about thirty to thirty-five thousand. The other comment that I would like to make is in fact that, um, what Alderman Walker and Alderman Piers and Alderman Cusick are saying is that they would like a rewrite of the, of this, of this report. And that I don't think is possible, it's not possible, Mr Mayor, because of what I've just said, among the go in relation to thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand tops, which has been, um, set aside in relation to this. And you can't expect that rewrite to go. And even the assumptions that have been listed here are, look at mythology. Now, mythology is really a very broad case of what were the sort of, um, uh, headings that come into play in response to this? Whether the assumptions in filings are robust and reasonable, well, it's already been confirmed in the letter from UTS that in fact they are robust and reliable on the information. So, look, I, I could go on, and most of you know where I stand on this, I don't think this is necessary. I don't think that the, the public at large, and I'm talking now about Clarence, would see this as a, as a, as a, as a very reasonable way of going about it. It could be perceived by the public within the city of Clarence that this is a case of where a number of the Alderman do not want to see mergers, and they want some sort of storming process, and this is probably the best way that you can either.
Thank you, Alderman Dan, uh, thank Alderman Tom, and then Alderman...
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A decision to amalgamate is essentially an investment decision. So, it's an investment both in financial terms and in the good for the ratepayers, for us particularly, of our community, for Sorel, Morgan Spring Bay, and Tasman, obviously, investment in their ratepayers. Any investment decision that you make, doesn't matter whether you're looking at buying a car, or you're looking at amalgamating a number of, of councils as we are. You would always test the assumptions that you make in the underlying information. You don't just decide, as has happened here, you know, a particular rate of return without looking at the sensitivity of that and what difference a particular rate would make. I think what we're looking at doing by going and having this review independently considered is just testing those assumptions that they're actually the best ones to make. And I think we owe it to our ratepayers to make sure that the information we're giving them is the very best that we can. And the decisions that we recommend based on that information are the best that we can make.
Thank you, I'll speak, uh, Alderman clearly.
Can I ask a question firstly? Uh, Sorel, Tasman, and Morgan Spring Bay, are they having a peer review of the report?
Uh, wanting to know that, uh, they're going to, if they haven't already, receive the report and agree to public consultation. Although, I'm not sure that they'll agree on the exact way they're going to go about it. Andrew, uh, look, gentlemen, you have a better one.
Not where they're speaking in an interview, no.
No, um, I'm inclined to agree with Alderman James, but I've held that opinion a while back as well. Because the amount of money and time that's gone into this particular report, I worry from a public point of view that an overkill of information can actually confuse the issue rather than clarify it. Um, I think the thing that needs to be remembered is that assumptions going forward based on a new entity, no one can actually predict which way that new entity is actually going to take this matter forward. And so much is being done on assumptions that we can make around the table, but they are, they are not necessarily set in concrete because this new entity actually has to make its own decisions and its own call. That is not necessarily something we can predict, we can, we can guess at it, we can actually think that that in a certain way is the way, the best way to go. But I think we've got to remember that this report is put in forward based on the statistics that they've used. This peer review won't create any more new statistics, it won't be able to create a new base from which to form any opinions. So, I think that is really what's got to be remembered, and whether a peer review, um, and I note the comment in the report that says that it must be brought in line, that any peer review will be the finding of a professional opinion only. Um, so it's not based on the types of, um, perceptions that we as Aldermen who actually live the reality of it all, um, can make.
Thank you, that speaks. Alderman Farm.
Um, I do support a review in the context that the brief that was given for the report was not something that we put together. Within the context of what has happened, it was a political exercise to fulfil an election promise from my perspective. And in that light, I have got no confidence in the fact that we have a state government that, you know, can bind water and sewage, and for whose benefit has that turned out? It certainly hasn't been a benefit to the community as far as increasing costs is concerned. Um, Alderman Piers mentioned a, a, a comment where it stated that, you know, the options that were being looked at shouldn't create any more costs for residents. And yet, in our discussions on numerous occasions, there has been that, uh, preferred or put forward, it has been put forward that obviously costs would increase. And as Alderman clearly just stated, a new body would be able to put forward its own justification, just like the water and sewage, uh, for increasing their costs constantly. We are elected to represent our local ratepayers, and we owe it to them to make sure that the report that was done by the insistence of a state government, uh, doesn't report, doesn't then, you know, replicate what's happened with water and sewage. Because quite frankly, I believe strongly that that is what will occur. I don't believe that this benefits the residents and that in the long run, it will only benefit the state government, not our taxpayer, our ratepayers. And at this point in time where we're looking at amalgamations in losing jobs from our local talented pool, et cetera, why would we want to decrease local employment? I don't care if they're upper administrators or managers, the fact is, we should not be, you know, looking at decreasing, uh, managerial roles. I find, for instance, looking at this council, that we are in dire need at times of extra managerial staff, that we don't have an ability to keep up with the workload that's put forward onto the staff that we've got. So, I support looking at another feasibility study that really has a brief to look at whether the benefits are there for the community.
Thank you, Alderman, that speaks. I reply. Uh, it looks like, um, we all have... I was, I was just looking at him, I've got the impression he didn't want to speak, Alderman Dan, you're most welcome.
Oh, thank you so much. Um, I concur with a, um, a lot of the speakers here, uh, Alderman, uh, have said here tonight that this is an investment decision. I fully concur with that, we have to get it right. Another Alderman stated that we, this is the most historic decision we'll probably ever make. And I, I feel if I'm an elected representative, I don't want to be, um, felt in, uh, respect later on. But I, I, if I had have gone that extra leg, it would have been the best thing to do and not just come back and say, oh, we want to know this or that. It's, it's great being wise in hindsight, but we've got to get it right first up, and that's why I support the motion.
Thank you, Alderman Dan.
Thank you, uh, Mr Mayor. Look, I think, again, I've talked about the process from the start, and, um, I think it's to our credit that, or maybe it's not so much to our credit, but to the, to the deficit of others. That we've had a high level of intellectual curiosity through the whole time. We came about the idea of... We came about the idea of facilitated workshop and through that process, a lot of the, a lot of the process was, was mapped out. At each and every working group meeting, there's been Clarence observes there. Can you, difficult to, to sort of think about any coming to some of the others. Um, and I think that shows how seriously this issue is taken. Um. And again, from the get-go, from the facilitated workshop, an independent review has always been part of our mechanism as we've been along. This isn't something we've done in a panic or a hurry. This is a measured part of the process. Because, as we know from other things, assumptions are crucial for the whole process. Now, again, assumptions have come up in the discussions from the alderman tonight, especially around the average salaries. Is that something that's ever happened before? Because pretty much a lot of the evidence seems to be that, that salaries and conditions always default to the highest level and what are ramifications of that? And around services, um, it's all well and good to, to talk about services being static, but we can't just jettison the minister's guiding principles. Service levels must improve. Harmonisation hasn't been factored into this level, I think, simply. But let's find out more about that process as we go along. For me, through this, uh, I guess one of the most frustrating things when I'm sitting in an observer's chair not being able to speak is the phrase often uttered by consultants. Uh, that's a matter for the new council. That is one of the biggest cockhous and, um, intellectual myopic statements you can make. Because we really have obligation and I'm just, that's the handle. That's saying someone else's problem. What a ridiculous mindset to have. That's someone else's problem. No way this is our problem. We have to, we have to strain, we have to focus to see what are the ramifications? What are the likely ramifications? And in doing so, what's the best way to do it? Is it to take what's written before us? Is it history from other councils? That is something that we have to work out because within this process, uh, we were told, there, there's very little around Queensland. We were told through this process with the KPMG report that there isn't really any detailed data. I'm not sure that that's the case. Maybe it is. Uh, as far as Auckland goes, which is mentioned in the report, it's interesting the wording around it. Because when it talks about benefits, it talks about past tense. The benefits had been, not in the present. This is robust, duty diligence, urgent, superb.
Thank you. So the motion for a chair is that council provisions need to review KPMG. Please feel this, uh, in the establishment of the greater established council, but by the way, against Harry. Um, it now behoses to select, um, one of the two, um, or overwires that we have circulated is SGS, Sorrel, D, or even the special research. Right, remember, in doing so, per urgent caution, that we are in fact, uh, being recorded and will be recorded in the public domain. Even, uh, before that, for the public. So, um, we need to be circumspect in there. We might criticize a particular, um, people or overwires. Well, I'm negative on motion for any development.
I'm going to have the UTSCG one. Second up. Thank you. Would you like to speak to it? If you'd like to speak to it.
Uh, I think their experience in the, in the sector and the information they provide to other councils in Tasman makes them a best choice.
Alderman James.
Yeah, I'd just like to add the comment, Mr. Mayor, that they did provide some detail in terms of the approach they've taken to, um, to undertaking the review, um, which, you know, I think puts their occasion with the other.
Okay, other speakers.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a sensible idea to actually have UTSCLG because they are at present doing a review of the Greater Hoba feasibility study. And therefore there will be some consistency in looking at that feasibility study and this one, which obviously at the moment we have doing different consultants with different methodologies. So I think this is a very sensible idea.
Again, Mr. President, Alderman Holland.
Uh, just asking if we could have a timeframe put into the briefing.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, they candid come back now after the report was circulated, but they did say three or four weeks, commencing in January. Alderman James.
Yes, just on the, on the costing and, uh, again, I won't mention that, but it appears that it could exceed the thirty-five thousand, uh, benchmark, which, well, there's no benchmark, but that's when we've had our discussions, Mr. Mayor. We've actually determined that we want to keep this cost down to an appropriate level. And just reading the pages three or four, uh, this doesn't allow for any fees or travel costs should a presentation to council be required. Now, I'm just a little bit unsure at this stage as to whether or not the review of the assumptions of feasibility report and given that that may require some in-depth, in-depth analysis, which in turn may require a firm to come back to a council and say, look, we need more time in our original proposal. We, we did not shut the door so as to sleep to other costs associated with this. And so because it's sort of an open-ended sort of arrangement from what has been provided in the documentation, this could blow up, Mr. Mayor, to quite a substantial amount of money. Whereas in the other proposal, they were fairly, well, they were circumspect in their, um, deliberation in keeping it at that lower level and that was quite clear in their estimate. And they did not make any reference to travel or presentation, et cetera. So really, um, if we are going to adopt a presentation or submission that's been moved by the movement secondary in relation to the UTSCLG, then I'm a little bit concerned about the cost. And it could blow out substantially. And because of that, I want to support the motion.
Thank you. Other speakers. Um. Robert Riley.
You can laugh, Peers.
Oh, you can laugh.
Uh, all of us. Robert Riley.
Uh, thank you.
I've booked motion that we set that point UTSCG, all those are better. Against Gary. Um, she brings this aside, seeks to pose a meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I'm second. Alderman Cusick, who wasn't there. And announced that he would have to wait until the camera was shut down.